He's wrapping up a prior meeting. He should be along shortly.
Other Brad, board member Brad.
Right, board member Brad.
Okay, Diane, councilman, member Reinhardt.
Here.
Chair Zirke.
Here.
And member Weinberger, not here, right?
Not here.
I can't see everyone anymore.
He can't join us today.
Right, I'll remember. Okay.
Okay, so we'll move into discussion items, tax increment financing overview and discussion.
Hey, I'm gonna make Mark the host. And he'll share the screen. While Mark is getting the presentation queued up, I want everybody to take a big breath, get your head out of the day-to-day grind of running your business, and think about the future. The Downtown Development Authority for Inglewood was really created to have a very long-term vision and to keep focused on that vision on a year-to-year basis. We're a 30-year entity here. We're not a 30-day entity. And what we're trying to figure out here is how to move forward financially. Okay, so we all know that the downtown electors last November voted to create the DDA so that we can implement the Inglewood Downtown Plan. They voted to authorize the DDA to collect and spend funds. And that includes grant funds, loan funds, tax funds, a whole variety of revenue that we are authorized to collect and spend. The voters did not authorize a two-mil levy increase on property taxes to fund DDA operations. So we don't have that operating revenue that other DDAs might have. And fourth, the voters narrowly voted down authorization for the DDA or the city to incur debt to allow the DDA to undertake large multi-year projects and improvements. So we have, we staff and consultants have spent a lot of time since the beginning of the year, kind of taking a deep dive into where do we go from here? And what finance strategy makes sense for this downtown? And the context that we're working in here. Our research has included talking to other downtown development authorities in Castle Rock, Longmont, Golden, Fort Collins, figure out, you know, find out what they did in the early years of their operations, how they utilized TIF. And we found out that TIF can be utilized in a great number of ways. And we're going to share some of those with you today. It's not just about bonding big projects. We've also done a preliminary analysis of sales and property tax trends so that you can sort of analyze where that's going and what we might do with it when. And we've done some research into new development that is currently under construction or in the pipeline in the downtown district that might represent new tax increment in the short term. Okay, so the strategy that we're going to try to walk you through, and forgive us if we get you in the weeds from time to time, we're trying to balance giving you a thorough understanding of how TIF works and what our options might be with keeping an eye on sort of policy decision-making. So if you feel like we're losing you in the weeds, we're going to have a couple of pause points during this presentation to kind of stop, regroup, answer any questions before we move on. Okay, but what we've come to is kind of four takeaways. And I admit, I've learned quite a bit in the last few months as part of this process. Number one, we can make new development work for us even in the short term. Number two, we can balance quality of life improvements with new development. And I think that's frankly where Denver has fallen short, or Inglewood might do better. Number three, we can jumpstart city center redevelopment so that we're creating new development and new tax increment to fund downtown projects. It's really where a lot of the new increment will come from, not all of it. But it's definitely a financial engine in terms of long-term 30-year financing for the downtown area. And number four, we can do all of that without raising taxes. So let's get going. Go ahead, Mark, and flip the slide if you could. I just wanted to share with you what I saw as a consultant during the downtown matters process in the first quarter of 2020. Before the world changed, we did a community survey. And it included online comments from residents in the area, from business owners, property owners, developers, stakeholders who were interested in the downtown area. And this wordle sort of brings up the words that were most important to them. You know, walkable, safe, a sense of community. Restaurants, you like the restaurants. People go downtown for the restaurants and the bars. Affordable, concern about affordability of housing, voiced not just from residents but from employers, including the hospitals and some of the newer businesses in town. Accessible, that's an interesting theme. But the fact is, we have many vulnerable segments of our population, from very young children to people with disabilities to older people and everything in between. Housing, diverse, this is their vision, right? And all of that informs, next slide please, Mark, the downtown plan, which you're getting more and more familiar with. It allows for us to focus on five areas: economy, jobs, and homes, marketing and programming, public spaces and place enhancements, mobility, parking, transportation, and land use and urban design. And I'm starting to boil that down to this phrase. Let's make downtown more economically vibrant, connected, safe, and green. To me, that's what this plan is about. How cool would it be if we can do that for our grandchildren? Because they're the ones who will be enjoying this 30 years from now. Next slide. So a quick reminder that one of the really primary goals of the downtown planning effort was to take three kind of unique sub-areas and connect them and make them a more cohesive, economically vibrant area. This notion of the three sub-areas can also inform our financing strategies. Okay. So this was another thing we talked about last year. Why are we doing this downtown program at all? Like, why now? Right? Well, the truth is, Inglewood has a lot of fundamentals in place that can and will and are making it a popular destination for new homeowners and new businesses and consumers. The location is great, right? It's just down the street from a very vibrant, large city. It has great access off of light rail and bus transit. It has two major economic engines in the two hospitals, major employers, both of which are expanding. Development along South Broadway is starting to reach Inglewood. It only makes sense that it would come our way. Demographic trends, Inglewood is very attractive right now to younger millennial families who are just starting out and boomers who are empty nesters. Both groups are looking for a more affordable quality of life and a walkable, easily accessible downtown area. They like that experience of living near and working in a downtown area in a smaller city. There's some incentives in place already. There's an enterprise zone and an opportunity zone covering the whole downtown district that offers some tax incentives for new development. And as of last year, we now have an adopted, not quite adopted, downtown plan and a downtown development authority, both of which have been recommended for the last 14 years by anybody who's studied this downtown area. So all of these factors are really not affected by last year's pandemic, our current pandemic, but the economic crisis that started to hit last year. These fundamentals are still in place. And what this means is that there is new development even today happening. And I'll give you more specifics in a few minutes. But Inglewood is not a depressed area. It's really about how do we make this development work for us? And how do we use a tool to enhance quality of life along the way? Next slide, please. Because new development isn't going to deal with quality of life, right? They're not going to build streetscapes and put in crosswalks and things like that. So this was the question that I posed to the city, really. Gosh, Dan, what has it been, two and a half years now? When I first got involved here was, there's an opportunity right now for downtown Inglewood to evolve in an intentional way that maintains its unique community character and brings up existing businesses and residents. Or it can opt to do nothing and let development occur in a market-based manner. Let the market decide, kind of like how Denver has done, you know, in a way. I think we've opted by creating the DDA and creating a plan of action that we have decided to be proactive. And we are not going to let the market decide entirely. It's just a matter of how far we're willing to lean into that and utilize the financial tools available to us. Next slide. So, quick review, you know, the DDA is a government entity. This is really important. We are different than urban renewal authorities. Okay, fundamental difference. Downtown development authorities are focused on downtown vitality, attractiveness, supporting property values, and interrupting downward trends. Okay, we are not about blight studies. We don't have any power of eminent domain. We go about our work in a more forward-thinking manner. Per state statute, our primary financial tool for projects, for the actual tangible work, is tax increment financing. And Mark shared kind of a really nice framework here that makes sense to me now that I've been studying this so deeply. The reason TIF is used is to make things happen at all. Okay, there are some areas where there is a market failure. And development infrastructure, public improvements, will not happen without public investment. So we want to intervene at that point. TIF can make it happen sooner, okay? We don't have to wait 25 years to do streetscape improvements on Old Hampden. We could do them in two or five years if we utilize TIF effectively. TIF can also make it happen better, especially in terms of placemaking, beautification, multimodal improvements. Private developers don't do that stuff. You know, they might do a private placemaking or a little something for their own residents or employees. But in terms of public amenities, public improvements, that takes public money, and the city doesn't have it. That's why cities create downtown development authorities, because this stuff is really expensive, and we'll show you why. Okay, Mark. Okay, quick primer on how does TIF work? Basically, again, TIF is not a tax increase for anyone. It's a tool, okay? It's a way we can capture new tax revenues generated in the downtown district and reinvest them in downtown projects and improvements. This is how we balance development and quality of life. So as we, the Downtown Development Authority, start investing in downtown, even this year through some of the city supplemental funding and some one-time economic recovery grants that we hope we can win, you know, we could start enhancing downtown, making a couple of areas safer, greener, start some planning on Old Hampden, start doing some research on multimodal connections around the downtown area. Those are the sorts of things that start attracting new customers, new businesses, and new development. And the more the DDA invests in these sorts of improvements, the more those investments are made and you start to generate new tax revenue. So this is the base tax revenue. This is what everybody pays in the downtown district today, okay? Once we start a base year, we start collecting new tax revenue, okay? But see how this is gradual? It means we probably won't collect a whole lot in the first couple, three years. It may not be enough to cover our operational costs and do some projects. So it starts kind of slowly, but then it increases. The city, the county, and the school district every year collect this base tax revenue. We don't get a dime until that revenue is collected and distributed to those taxing entities. We collect anything new, and after 30 years, all of the revenue goes to the city, the county, and the school district. One thing I want to flag for you is that we might end up creating several TIF areas over time in order to collect projected tax revenue at a time where it's being generated. Mark will get into this more, but it's very likely that we'll have more than one TIF area over the course of the next 20 or 30 years. I'm going to pause here and see if anybody has any questions. No? Okay, I'm going to do a little dance, and I'm going to hand it over to Mark.
Thank you, Hillary. Hillary, you did a great job of talking through that and setting it up and setting up, thanks for the lead-in, on how we can make something that looks really simple be really complicated. So now I'm going to add another layer of complexity. So we really love the blue area, right? Like, that's the increment. That's what we're all shooting for here is the blue area. Now we'll talk about kind of ways that you could implement that seemingly pretty straightforward concept. There are two different types of tax increment. There's sales tax increment and there's property tax increment. They all can function within, or both of them, sorry, can function within that 30-year window, okay, of a downtown development authority. And one of the things that Hillary pointed out kind of early on is these three distinct areas within the DDA boundaries. And we've just sort of reinforced that here by showing that when you set up a tax increment area, it has very firm and established geographic boundaries to it. So you have to be very intentional about what area you're going to encompass when you start a 30-year clock. And so this is just trying to show you where we're actually going to have borders that we have to define for different areas. And so these are just illustrative. We can, that's one of the purposes of the DDA is to decide where you want to implement your tool, over what kind of area and when. And then just thinking through that of these three discrete areas that we have, you can end up with six tax increment areas because you might want to start sales tax increment before you start property tax increment, for instance, or vice versa. And so you just want to be thoughtful about how that works. And we picked three because three kind of align nicely with the characteristics of the sub-areas. But it could be more or less depending on, you know, future decisions that this body makes. But what we really want to just talk through is the thoughtfulness necessary as you start these clocks because you do live with them for decades and you live with the results of what you set in motion. And so you want to be very deliberate about that and intentional. So let's talk a little bit about sales tax increment first, which I should probably advance the slide you can see to do that. So how, we talk about base years, and that's the gray, remember, in that first graphic? And so when this body decides that it wants to start and establish a tax increment area, that will have a specific date. By order of statute, when that date starts, when that 30-year clock starts, the city looks back a year and says, okay, what did this area generate in terms of sales tax over the last 12 months? And that will be the base level that is set. And then over the next, every year after that, from that date, the sales tax increment will have to meet that base number. And then as it exceeds it, that becomes the increment that the DDA is entitled to. So we tried to take that concept and apply it to the South Broadway area. So let's assume we start the clock August 1 of this year of 2021. The city would look back for the preceding 12 months, and they'd say, okay, we collected about $1.4 million from that South Broadway area in sales tax over the preceding 12 months. Then on an August 1 forward date, so between now and July 31 of 2022, that area has to, again, exceed $1.4 million before there would be any sales tax increment generated from the South Broadway area. And so what we wanted to just point out is that lag between when this body takes action and when you might experience cash flow from the generation of sales tax increment. And so, of course, there's a lot of business owners on this call. You guys understand how you collect and report and remit sales tax to the city. The city then will look at it. The city will add it all up. The city will then decide whether or not we've exceeded the base. And then the city will take that and transfer it to the DDA. So there is a lag between when the transaction occurs, when the merchant reports, and when the city has kind of done their administrative processing and forwarded it to the DDA. So those are mechanics. But that's why when we say if you were to act on August 1, there likely wouldn't be any tax increment generated and available for the DDA until likely a full year later. Because there's really nothing happening that's changing radically the retail activity in that area right now, right? You're not adding a lot of new merchants. There's not a lot of new construction. But there could be just growth as we kind of emerge from what we have been doing to hopefully more activity over time. So it can generate organically, or it can generate as the result of new development in an area. Any questions on sales tax increment before I switch over? All right, I like it. I'm either explaining it well, or you guys are all shy. Okay, property tax, it's a little harder because it's not as straightforward. There's, of course, we all pay our property taxes and we all kind of understand the process. And so the property tax increment has to flow from the Colorado property tax process. So fundamentally, we set the base year sort of the same way. So I'll get into that in a minute when we have an example. But it's effectively that same thing. You're setting a bar. What are the assessed values in a property tax increment area when I start the clock? Okay, and we'll get into how that's measured. But it's the last certified values that the county has on record when we set that area. And then the base, unlike sales tax increment, the base actually creeps up over time. And that's because just the way the statute works, they really want to account for market appreciation. So don't want to sort of freeze property values and tax revenues to the taxing authorities if, you know, properties in the entire county are going up 2% or 3% a year just by natural appreciation. They capture that in the base, so the base floats. And then TIF revenues will fluctuate because remember, your property tax bill is just the result of math. And so the assessor says how much your property is worth. They apply an assessment rate to it. And then every year, taxing authorities say how much their mil levy is going to be, right? And they add up all those mil levies, and you apply that times the assessed rate, and that gives you your value, or that gives you the taxes paid. And so, you know, school districts go up and down, city mil levies go up and down. And as a result, TIF could fluctuate even if the AV stays constant because the mil levy changes. So we just wanted to point that out, that there's some variability in there. All right, so when is property tax increment available? Well, it's a little longer of a process because it is not as cut and dry as sales tax. There is property taxes when they're paid. It's generated from the assessed value. And remember, in Colorado, we pay our taxes in arrears. So we haven't paid our 2021 taxes yet, right? We might have just kept checks, but that was for paying 2020's taxes. And so when we talk about property tax increment, especially in the context of new construction, you can expect there to be a two-year delay between when new investment occurs in an area. The assessor then has to assess it, and then you pay your property taxes in arrears. So it takes an extra year for that cash to be generated from property tax increment. So again, we tried to apply the same kind of dates here, just so we could have a better example. So let's say that this body, again, moves to set a property tax increment area for the medical district, for instance, again, effective August of 2021. The base property values will be established from the assessor's last certified values, which occurred on December of 2020. So that's the last time they have done anything, and that's what the base would look to. And remember that certified values are as of January 1 of every calendar year. So if 2021, being a reassessment year, were to have property values increase over the 2020 base level, then taxes paid in 2022 would generate some amount of increment. But that would be the soonest that we could see increment being generated. And so, again, this is trying to give us a little bit of an appreciation for just how these different tools work. Any questions on that one? All right. So how can we use TIF? Well, really, this is the kind of universe that we're living in. We can use it for operations of the DDA. We can use it for both programming and/or public improvements if we have the cash on hand, and that's important as we talk about other aspects of this later. It can be, we can use it to help fund development projects or construction of those related improvements. So if we needed to move a storm sewer pipe, for instance, to make way for a project that couldn't otherwise pay for that and its construction, that could be a way to help catalyze a project. We can use it to finance larger multi-year projects. So we can finance against future tax increment cash flows when we have a project and we understand what the boundaries are and the potential revenues are of that. And so those can be individual financial analyses that we'll do. And then how do we use that TIF? Well, the DDA board gets to decide how to use it, right? This is, that's your job, is to decide how you're going to use the resources at your disposal. And then city council also has some approval rights. They have approval rights as they go through and approve the downtown plan of development. The downtown plan of development is, of course, written. And then as part of the city council adopting it and approving it, there's also just an addendum to it that says, and we're going to maybe set up this tax increment area. And if we choose to do future tax increment areas, city council gets to approve that as well as an amendment to the plan of development. City council approves the annual budget. So they kind of understand at a high level what you're going to undertake. And then if we were to bond for projects, while the bonds are approved by city council and they are repaid by the special revenue that the DDA generates. And so the city approves those financial transactions and the issuing of the debt, but it's repaid through DDA TIF revenues. All right. Investment criteria. So how do we decide? So how do we decide how we're going to use TIF? The good news is there's there's not a lot of handcuffs on your guide rails for it. So this body gets to determine its policies around how it chooses to apply its tool. Hillary has already talked about kind of the purpose of DDAs in statute, that they're very forward looking. You don't have to have things in a really bad shape before you can use the tool. But there's also responsible action, right? Like, we're not just going to hand out money to people because they asked for it. We have, they need to demonstrate to us a need for that or demonstrate to you to your satisfaction that there's a need for it. Is it consistent with your guiding principles under your development plan? And then this last one is really the important one. Those are really big guideposts, those first three points here. But then you get to decide if you want to add to that and refine the criteria by which you would understand it with by which you would consider using your tool to help a project or an area. And then the last thing that I would say on this topic is give yourselves the freedom to let that evolve over time as you as your circumstances change, as downtown evolves. It's a long game we're playing here and our priorities early on may not be our priorities ten or fifteen years from now. So that that's a very fluid thing. All right. The next piece is we've talked about the tool, we've talked about the revenues. So that's the TIF, right? And then the debt authorization is is another enabling facet to how to utilize the tool.
Sorry. Can I interrupt you and ask a question?
Please.
Can you clarify a little bit on the the different TIF areas? If we were, why would we set different areas instead of just one TIF for the entire already defined DDA?
I've got a fabulous slide in like three slides.
Okay.
Would it be okay if we waited for that?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So the the TIF versus the debt authorization. So we we've talked about the revenues and and so now we've got these revenues. That's great. Those revenues can be used only when they are realized and in the DDA's possession under the way, under the authorizations that we have today. So they can fund these annual costs. But of course, you don't have any money. We just looked at it and said, oh, wait, we might not get any money from sales tax increment until, you know, at least a year from now. And so we have to get from here to there. And so that's being dealt with by the the loan from the city. Projects or programs can happen in that year if you have the revenues or the cash in the bank. And so that really kind of limits the things that the DDA can undertake right, right from the get go until you were to sit and wait and build those accounts. And there's no guarantee that you'll that that those monies will come in. So it's sort of a a risk and a longer term delay of getting things implemented. So the debt authorization can allow you to advance and speed up some of those projects that you might not otherwise be able to undertake if you had a debt election, a debt authorization. So that allows you to incur those debts and make multi-year commitments. And so city center is the one that we talk about a lot because that's got a lot of parking lots. That's got a lot of infrastructure challenges, not a lot of density. And the retail has has been not as successful as I think people would have hoped it to have been. So it's low density, doesn't provide a lot of. You know, it's a single use, right? I guess that's what I'm trying to say. So density and mixed use would make it more vibrant. Having said that, though, there's so much infrastructure needs there that it's really hard to be able to think about how to redo that without the ability to bond or borrow against what future revenues might be available in a in a development. So the private sector is not going to bring the money to move the storm sewer pipes and to change the streets and to build parking garages and build the apartment or the office or the hotel, they can't do all of that. And so that's where we might use these public finance tools to help move that along. The major public improvements that we have here, if we wanted to do improvements to Hampden, that would be a multi-year project. The DDA can't enter into those contracts without having the money in the bank. And it happened in a one year period of time. And of course, we've all seen roadwork, roadwork like that isn't going to happen in just one year. The the services that we're talking about, I won't read all these things. And then the other, the other tool that we haven't talked about before is a reimbursement agreement. The the DDA doesn't have to borrow money by itself and and inject it into a project, right? What the DDA could do is say, hey, I really like your project. I agree that you have a financial gap. But developer, I'm going to ask you to go borrow the money necessary to realize this project. But what I'll do is I'll reimburse you from the tax increment that your project generates over the next twenty or thirty years and you go borrow that money and not make it the DDA's problem. The DDA will just, this is, this is what we call a classic risk transfer between the public and the private sector. We'll pay you the money that you generate after you make all the investments to generate that public money. And so those things can't happen without a debt authorization.
And I would just add, it's it's typically not a one hundred percent tax reimbursement. It's usually fifty to seventy percent, perhaps based on their projected projected tax burden, I guess, over the thirty year period. And the rest of the increment, forty percent of it goes to the DDA for for their projects. So it gives them a little bit of additional funding for the gap, but we share the the tax revenue.
Yeah, I think that Hillary, I think that's exactly right for for what different DDAs have chosen to do from a policy perspective. And so each project's different and you guys will figure out what you think works best for your situation. Okay, we've thrown a ton at you guys. And I apologize, I'm the one who got into the weeds. So are there questions that we can answer on anything that we've talked about thus far before I toss it back to Hillary?
I have a question. When we, when this didn't pass before, what type of TIF was it? Was it? Now that I understand that there can be different zones and different types, what was? What was, what was tried or projected first?
My feeling is we never had the chance to get into this level of detail with the electors. We had three other major questions on the ballot and a lot to communicate during a pandemic and shutdown conditions. We talked generally about the need to have bonding capacity to undertake large catalyst projects and public improvement projects. But since then, we've we've done a lot of research and determined there are more ways to use TIF that we we didn't consider at that time. We just didn't get that deep into the analysis last year.
Amy, it's Dan Vrembo. On behalf of the city, I might just say that, you know, we did focus under Tabor on the debt authorization aspects of TIF because those require so much specific approval. And so we asked for an eighty million dollar debt authorization. And we'll talk about that more today. And we'll get into Erica's question about how that debt authorization is kind of viewed as being spread over the three different sub areas. And and to Hillary's point, you know, it was such a massive ask with the four questions on the ballot and the way that they all needed to be so detailed. We've, we really were, especially in a pandemic year, we were really, really fortunate to get the first two approved. And now we have an opportunity that we'll go into here this year to hopefully go back and really pick up the ballot question that really gets the big bang, if you will, out of the power of a downtown development authority. And that's the debt authorization. And with that, I'll shut up.
Hillary Graham, you had raised your hand.
Yeah, I want to make a distinction. I think it's been made really clearly in the presentation today, but I'm not so sure it was clear early on that TIF is a power that the DDA has regardless of voter approval. So as long as you're spending current fiscal year funds, that's, that's your right as the DDA. Where it got a little convoluted is when TIF became shorthand for debt or bond authorization. And I think we're doing a better job of distinguishing that now.
Okay, thanks for those clarifying comments, you guys. And I thought I was tossing it back to Hillary, but you're stuck with me for another few slides, apologies here. So we're going to talk about, this is where we get into Erica's question. Why would we talk about multiple TIF areas? And and the reason to talk about it is because you have thirty years to play with. When you start that clock, you have thirty years, so timing is really important. And and you want to make sure that you're kind of aligning your timing with activities that you think will help achieve your goals, right? So and and you have this opportunity that we talked about before to segment sales tax or property tax and by geographic area. I I unfortunately have been doing this since nineteen ninety six. And as a result, if anybody wants to be bored to tears with war stories about where this worked well and where it didn't work well, let me know, I'll buy you a beer and bore you at the same time. But and then the and then the debt authorization considerations and DDA funding implications. So that's, we're going to try to cover all of those in these next few slides. So you've seen this before, we talked about these sub areas. Let's just imagine that that we break our sales tax up into these three areas. And we say, we're going to start, we're going to time the start of them, okay? This is what that would look like from a revenue generation standpoint. So the yellow line is, Erica, if we did a one sales tax increment area, okay? And we got successful at starting city center, okay? So when you start city center, you're going to tell lots of those retailers to go away because I want to scrape your building and I want to start something else. So the sales tax is actually going to go down in city center while the redevelopment activities are underway. And then it'll go back up, right? And hopefully go back up. But what about the medical district or what about the Broadway corridor? You'd hate to be seeing success and energy happening in those areas. And it's actually being sucked down from what's going on in city center. So in this graph, what this is showing you is again, the yellow bar is one big sales tax increment area. And you see that you would generate with some modest assumptions around economic activity. You see where you'd get to a little over two hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty two of increment. And even though the medical and the South Broadway areas are still doing well, if all goes to plan, we're going to be scraping some buildings in city center. And that will create an anchor effect on the rest of the DDA's sales tax increment. Because if you set the base here with everything as some go up, but city center goes down, you actually have generated zero increment. And so if you set it as three separate areas, then the medical district will do what it does. Broadway will do what it does, those were generating cash flow. And and city center isn't negatively impacting those areas. And so you are able to generate some dollars and and forward the DDA's goals and objectives in that sort of twenty twenty three through twenty twenty six period when you you're going to undergo a long period of development and construction in the city center area. So that's kind of the first step. And then I tried to put the numbers in place at the top. So in that twenty twenty two through twenty twenty six, five year span, you could actually get almost a million dollars less increment even though you had generated two million dollars of increment in that five year window by putting it as one big area versus three discrete separate areas. Okay?
If you, thank you, that makes a lot of sense. Sorry, I'm getting an echo. That makes a lot of sense. If you, if we define three different areas, are there limits on where the increment can be spent? Does that then, does the spending also apply to the defined area?
I'm going to let Hillary Graham answer that because she's given some good advice on this previously. She says it well.
I I hope I'm consistent with my prior advice. It can be spent throughout. There is, however, probably a need to address what would be perceived as fairness issues or potentially fairness issues.
So I think that becomes one of those things that the DDA board has the ability to implement a policy on. I always like to bring up like a circulator shuttle. The medical district might be doing really, really well from a tax increment generation standpoint. And you may have done some things in the east area, but as time goes on, maybe you want to start that connectivity with the light rail station going through the other two areas. And so clearly, all three would benefit from something that may be getting funded by only one or two areas initially. But those are, those are policy decisions that you guys can make on how you want to spend your resources. But there's no legal limitation. All right, so hopefully this is a compelling reason to talk about one versus multiple as, but there's, there's kind of two steps to this process. So one is, do I want to do one area or three areas? The other one is, when do I want to start the clocks on these things? And so what we did is went back through and said, okay, let's, let's just show sort of really conservative growth projections. If you started the clocks at different moments in time, and that's what these little these little dots are, is showing that you might start one in twenty twenty one and you might wait to start another one in until twenty twenty seven, for instance, because that might be what you believe is the most opportune moment to do it. And you see how the the red and the green or the blue and the green lines track very similarly until those different clocks starts start to end, right? As they sunset, as those thirty year periods sunsets. If you started them all at once, then it just stops in twenty fifty one. If you had staggered them, that's actually fifteen percent more revenue over time because you started them at more opportune moments in time. So if we started the city center sales tax increment clock right now, we know there's appreciably not going to be much generated for several years while while redevelopment efforts are underway and until it gets built out and and more mature. So I would just recommend that that we think about not only the beginning of the curve, but also the end of the curve and make sure that we're giving ourselves enough resources to to take on challenges that we see today and challenges that are yet to come that are unseen. All right. Now I finally get to pass it back to someone else that won't bore you as much.
Change, change the, change the channel here for a minute. So how do we apply TIF to each of the three sub areas? It's not a one size fits all strategy. We can be customized and tailored in how we apply TIF in each sub area depending on its context and local identity. So city center, for example, you know, the 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 vision there is to redevelop an older, large format retail center into a higher density, mixed use, transit oriented village. Okay. Castle Rock did something very similar and so did Longmont. The photo in the upper left is one fifty Main Street in downtown Longmont. This was a significant new development at the foot of their main street next to a new light rail station that added several hundred new apartments just as COVID started hitting. So several hundred new customers right at the base of Main Street while while COVID shutdowns were happening and and the businesses were really starved for customers. Similarly, the lower right hand corner is called Riverwalk, that's in Castle Rock. And that is a three hundred and sixty four unit residential apartment community right in their downtown district. It's It's one of four catalyst projects that the Castle Rock DDA invested in using, using the sales tax reimbursement model. Okay? They attracted, because they, because they invested in, in these projects, they created 117,000 square feet of office space, almost 500 residential units. And this new population attracted seven new restaurants over, over a few-year period and helped sustain local businesses through the COVID crisis. So we need to be aware of resiliency, economic resiliency. How do we sort of boost downtown Inglewood to withstand the next downturn? And this is, this is one way we can do that. Inglewood Parkway, lower left, is, is in need of streetscape improvements from the Broadway section all, all the way in. That's a pretty expensive public infrastructure expense. And as Mark pointed out, having some kind of enhanced transit service that connects the growing population in City Center with the merchants along South Broadway and Old Hamden might be an amenity that we would want to invest in. Currently, you should know there is an apartment building in the City Center area in the pipeline for 311 units. Okay? So there is property tax increment in the pipeline today that we could capture and put to use. Okay, next slide. So South Broadway, the vision is different, right? It's all about enhancing the traditional Main Street of, of Inglewood. So you know, the kinds of, the kinds of projects we might undertake using TIF might be building improvement grants or facade improvement grants that would allow a business to expand, grow, or attract new customers. Fort Collins has given out $1.2 million in facade improvement grants since 2007. For up to $50,000 each, this corner building is a, you know, an iconic historical building in their downtown that they wanted to make sure stayed. And so they put some money toward, toward the renovation of it. Alley activation is another project that many downtown areas are implementing. The photo on the lower right is in Fort Collins. These, these also cost money, but they allow for, this is really important. We've all learned this now due to the pandemic and Erica has learned it firsthand. Many of our businesses that are along our Main Street corridors just don't have a lot of room to operate outside, right? They're constrained in their interior space. And what the COVID health regulations helped us understand is we could allow them to expand their patios to the side of their building or even sometimes behind their building in the patio area. And that helps us keep our local businesses, okay? They've got to turn more tables as the area around them grows and more customers come to the area. So we need to be thinking about how to support our local businesses and make sure they can rise with the tide over the years. And these alley enhancements and patio expansions are really innovative, critical ways to allow for that. Here's another thing, street trees. I don't know if you, you know this, but most of the street trees along South Broadway today are ashes, okay? The Emerald Ash Fore is coming to this area and the Denver Park or excuse me, the Inglewood Parks Department estimates that within five years, all of those trees will be diseased if not dying. So street tree canopy, we need to step up to that. That's, that is critical to enhance, enhancing that sense of historical ambiance along South Broadway and Hamden as well. Okay? Next slide. So the medical district, the, the vision here is to transform a kind of fast-moving commercial corridor into a mixed-use, multimodal Main Street. Okay? Hamden today is not safe. It's not attractive and it's not accessible with people of different ages and abilities. And it's really busy. If you've noticed lately, there's a lot of new construction over, underway. And that's because there are not one, not two, but 10 development projects either under construction or in the planning pipeline today on Old Hamden. And they add up to 357,000, 357 residential units, 14,000 square feet of new retail, and 219,000 square feet of new commercial space. That's new property and, and retail tax revenue. That's increment we could use.
Oh no, we lost Hillary.
Swedish Medical Center.
Hey Hillary, we're losing your, your microphone there. You might double check it.
You were frozen for a little bit too.
Oh no. Well.
Let me, can you, can you fill in Mark while we're, while she's trying to get back on?
Yeah, I, I think she was really kind of wrapping up with, boy, there's a lot of stuff going on in the, in the medical sub-district that is an opportunity for the DDA to kind of implement its tool to, to capture some of that development activity that's already starting and start to plow it back into these public realm improvements that have been planned for a long time. And we know we need to kind of help that area kind of support it and buttress it and not just have new buildings without the infrastructure that can support it and make it more connected to the, to the other areas of, of the DDA.
And that's how we balance new development with quality of life.
You're back.
I know, sorry about that.
Hillary, am I on again here for debt?
You better take it the how you are, Mark.
All right. So remember, remember there were the three sort of big uses of tax increment? There was addressing market failures where development can't happen at all without some public intervention. There's the make it happen sooner or make it happen better. And so this gets you back to the debt authorization. So we can try through us, through a series of smaller moves to really help support and catalyze development and, and creation of tax increment and just really prosperity for the area, right? That's what we're trying to get to. And, and we can do that over a longer period of time by waiting until that increment starts to organically generate. Or the debt authorization can allow you to bring some of those revenue streams forward. And that's what this is trying to show is that the green bars are hypothetical tax increment generation over a 30-year period. And so you can either wait until those moments where the green bars get fatter to use them and do higher dollar investments. Or through a debt authorization, you can kind of do what the chart on the right shows. And that is you could pull a lot of that forward and then pay it off. The orange is paying off that debt over time. And then the green is again, free cash flow that allows you to make other investments. And so that's really all we're trying to do is pull those future revenues forward and help, help them realize, become realized, right? And so we think that's really the, the key issue here is, is how do we pull the promise of the DDA and the reinvestment in the area forward to where we can really start to make it happen, make it a self-fulfilling prophecy and not just hope that the market's going to do that work for us?
Mark, I have a question.
Yes.
If the, I'm looking at the orange bar. If, and that all assumes that the development, whatever projects we take on would be successful enough to generate enough increment, correct?
Yes.
If we were to take on a project that didn't do as well as we expected in 2049, could we ever get in a situation where 100% of the increment was going toward paying off the debt?
You can, because what, what you're going to do is there'll be a specific underwriting exercise every time we do a bond issue, right? And the, and the lenders will say, all right, I believe in the project. I believe that you're going to generate this much revenue. But unexpected things happen and, and you know, potentially it underperforms what those investments might be, or, or sorry, what those revenue generators were expected to do, they might, it might fall short of that. In those cases, the, the bondholders have a schedule of debt service and you need to meet it if you can, right? Like that's the obligation. That's the trade you made for taking their money upfront is you're going to pay them back. And so if the green bars are smaller over time, you still got to make the orange payment.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. And Hillary, you know this area inside and out. You've got a lot to talk about. There's a lot to do in the DDA.
Yeah, I'm sorry I keep coming in and out. I think I resolved it on my end, but I apologize for any confusion. So here's a big picture look at some of the projects that we could take on over the next 30 years. And it's not inclusive of every, everything. There will be opportunities that come up that we may want to take advantage of and play a role in that we don't know about today. But we do know about, about these ones. Any, so for, for example, streetscape improvements along the Inglewood Parkway, construction of a parking structure in order to free up land for development, residential or commercial development over near the light rail station. Okay? South Broadway midway, mid-block pedestrian crossing around the Gothic Theater has been in the plans for a very long time. The street tree program I mentioned, the ability to do facade grants and alley activation along Old Hamden. This is the streetscape stormwater replacement, facade grants for the businesses along Old Hamden and potentially some alley work there too. The reason cities don't do these things is because they're really expensive and, and there isn't typically money for them. So for example, the Old Hamden Streetscape Stormwater and Facade Grant Program alone could cost 15 to 20 million dollars on South Broadway. Facade grants, alley improvements, crosswalks, trees, that could be another 15 million easily in today's money. City Center, you know, looking at a parking facility, streetscape improvements, improving the, the central piazza as a public gathering space, you know, that could top 30 million dollars. So what we tried to do in the next slide, go ahead and switch it over, Mark, is to look at, you know, the real costs of these things and how that could affect our TIF strategy.
Thanks Hillary. One thing that, well, I'll, I'll touch on it in a minute. Let me orient you to this. This is the table that we worked through city council with back in June of 2020. We, we've made some slight adjustments to it to really reflect the breadth of things that debt authorization allows us to do. It's not just going out and borrowing money and offering bonds. It's these multi-year contracts and it's entering into grants and reimbursement agreements and all those sorts of things. But I think an earlier question was, how, how do we pick 80 million? Well, this is how, this, this is the example that we used with city council and they were able to discuss kind of options here. So what we tried to do is say, let's book in this. Let's talk about 40 million dollars on one hand, and let's go crazy. Let's talk about 150 million dollars on the other hand. And, and in that range of things, what could you really get accomplished? Well, we know we need some heavy infrastructure in City Center to, to get rid of surface parking lots and densify that area, right? So early projections are around 35 million is what we may need to help enable projects to happen there. Well, if you're at the 40 million dollar number, great, you've done one thing and now you're out of debt authorization or, or almost out of it. And so you've really backed yourself into a corner there. When you talk about alley improvements, crosswalks, improvements, the tree canopies, what we want to do in the medical district, what we want to do along South Broadway or even the, the Hampton, Inglewood Parkway areas and the storm sewer improvements that we have to do. I mean, we today could talk about around 100 million dollars worth of investments that I think we'd like to see within the DDA. And that's what we have identified today at the beginning stages of a DDA and, and a downtown sort of evolution over the next several decades. And so we said, well, let's not just limit ourselves to what we can see right in front of us. Let's also acknowledge that there's going to be future opportunities that reveal themselves. So let's put a placeholder in for that too. And so you can see that even at 150 million dollars, you kind of chew up a lot of that over some, over a period of time that there's not a ton left over. And so one of the things that really resonated with us as we were talking through this is the debt authorization doesn't obligate the city or the DDA to ever borrow that much. It's really, it's a, it's a procedural step to take to allow you the ability to consider entering into those sorts of transactions. I see we've got a hand up. Let me pause for that. Mr. Sierra?
Yeah, Mark, I just had a question regarding, are you able to hear me or?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So Mark, I just got a question regarding the stormwater improvements. I'm a little bit confused because since it is an enterprise fund, is that something that would be picked up as part of the debt authorization? Or is that something that still falls under the city and under Public Works as part of the enterprise fund?
Well, as I understand it, the city today is going to ask the developer of City Center to figure out how to pay for the things that need to happen to allow that project to be realized. And so even though it might be something that could live under the enterprise fund, it is also something that the DDA could get involved with if there was a challenge with funding it under kind of conventional existing funding sources. And, and I apologize. I, I also, these are, these are example question, or, so I, I may have missed some of the details here. The point was just to illustrate that there's a lot of things that we can do out there.
No, I understand that. The, the only reason why I'm bringing it up is that the stormwater, obviously we've been having discussions of that for the past two and a half years. And I'm well aware of the, how big of a ticket item it is. So if that still falls under the purview of the, of the enterprise fund, then obviously there would be a little bit more money to make other improvements. I'm just trying to understand whether or not that would, whether or not it falls under the debt authorization or whether or not it just still stays under the purview of that enterprise fund. So that was, that's the reason for my question.
Wish I had a better answer for you. Mr. Nixon?
Just a point of clarification. So as we push for debt authorization, does it have to be relative to a specific amount? Or is it just that we're going to take on debt?
As we understand it, taper election very specifically, the guidelines are that the voters have to authorize a specific maximum amount.
That's correct. And the DDA statute also specifies that you have to project with the maximum repayment cost could be.
So you're suggesting with this, you have two scenarios, a 40 million dollar ask versus 150 million dollar ask. Both whichever way we choose to go, the, those that are in the electorate are going to vote on the specifics of that number.
Well, the city council has to approve the election question language. And I would expect that they would look to the DDA board to have an opinion as to what the appropriate amount on the election question should be. What we were trying to do is just give this body a little bit of context for how the 80 million was arrived at last year. We, we put these bookends out and then there was just discussion amongst the members of city council as to what an appropriate number could be to, to, to give the DDA the ability to operate and, and consider multiple projects, not just a single project and then be kind of out of money from authorized debt perspective. But then also something that could be explained and tolerable for the electorate.
Brad, just for the
Brad, just for the board, just for the board's advanced thinking, you know, in the political context, I think it probably makes sense to be thinking about that eighty million dollar number again, just as a starting point, because that's where we were last year. There was a lot of rationale for how it was arrived at. And it clearly supports a nice collection of different projects within the three different subareas over time. As Mark points out, it's probably not large enough in in the real world. But we're also dealing with the political realities and, you know, the need to be as prudent as we can and take this on kind of on a phased basis, too.
And I also assume it's not a one and done. We can go back with another, you know, ask.
Correct, correct.
And then the last thing that I just want to really emphasize here is, again, the debt authorization doesn't require debt. And and even a debt authorization of eighty million, the DDA would never be able to go out and borrow that, right? They would borrow some little portion in a single transaction, but then they'd have the ability to enter into these multi-year contracts and other things that would also count towards that debt authorization cap. But there's a there would be multiple transactions that would fit under whatever that established maximum would be. As a as we like to say, if you're thinking about it as a homeowner, this would be the debt authorization is your pre pre-approval before you ever go out and talk to anybody that you might do business with to just show that, remember, one of the things that you need to do is you need to be able to work with the private sector to attract investment. And one of the things that we always talk about is that is that private sector investors are not looking to work on a project hoping that an election will be successful a year or two from now. But they're going to stick with you and hope that, you know, cross their fingers and hope that it all works out. They'll say there's no path forward, there's no clear path forward for me to be able to partner with somebody to realize this project. And so I need to have that certainty. So that's the other kind of important thing here as we talk about making sure we can realize our goals through the the reinvestments and the partnering with private sector. It's an important piece to give you the ability to turn people down if you don't like the partnership. But you may not even get asked to enter into a partnership if you don't have the ability to to partner with them.
And and Mark, with that analogy of just thinking of your home, it it's kind of like a like a home equity of credit. Wouldn't it that you're authorized to say a hundred and fifty million or eighty million, whatever that is, but then we can go through the process to select projects and we only maybe will spend, you know, these smaller dollar amounts in there. It doesn't mean that immediately we're going to be going out spending eighty million or a hundred and fifty million. We're just going to select projects, but have that cap that we can have that credit against.
That's exactly right. Just because you go get a line of credit doesn't mean you ever have to draw against it. But I wanted to, so your analogy is absolutely right, Mr. Calvert. I just also want to say that this doesn't give you real financial tools and it doesn't take on debt. What it does is give you the opportunity to go enter into that transaction. All right. I think that horse is dead. I apologize. I spent so much time on it. All right, tossing this back to Hillary for final comments here. Oh, is this me, Hillary? I think this is me. So why would we do this right now? So let's talk about do nothing.
Can you change the screen, Mark? There we go.
Thank you. It's the danger of two screens. So do nothing. Well, we can, again, just hope that that organic growth and that increment sort of reveals itself over time and is generated, and then the DDA has some money. I think we've hit that point several times, or we can work to try to figure out how to be proactive and catalyze some of that and attract that investment. Let's make the development work for us. Hillary has talked a little bit about active projects and activity in the area today. You're going to need to balance the ability to capture those about the the values that are being created today with the long term kind of considerations. Are are we starting it early to capture a part of it? Is there more to capture later? What's the cost benefit analysis of those things? And you're going to have to be thoughtful about each one of those. But if we seek that debt authorization, that allows us to do everything we just talked about on the previous slide. And can we jumpstart the redevelopment of city center? Which, Dan, you're the point person for the city on that big behemoth complicated thing. I think that there is a general feeling amongst the people that are involved with it that without a debt authorization, it's going to be really difficult to jumpstart city center.
Yeah, I think that's right, Mark. And we, that was the basis of a lot of our conversation with city council last summer. And, you know, the general idea is that by having a public finance tool like the DDA debt available, we really keep our master developer SKB in the ballgame and you know, equip them to move forward as quickly as they can. Basically, the initial dollars from a DDA debt authorization and city center could go for public improvements, a variety of public improvements, including a lot of the space around the public plaza area. It's generally thought that that would be reconfigured into a festival street kind of entryway into downtown. You know, so not only serve city center, but really provide an entry into downtown, which has been missing. And then, of course, as we've talked about and mentioned with city council last summer, there's a vision of creating a new shared parking structure that would really facilitate a lot of vertical development. And the the good news for the DDA generally is that vertical development then creates lots of increment, which in turn allows a lot of funding across the balance of downtown.
And Dan, I would only add one thing to it, that we have kind of a love hate relationship with our private sector partners. Sometimes we love them, sometimes we don't love them so much, but SKB is very much like any other private sector investment. So as Dan mentions, SKB, it's not about SKB. It's about the city being able to partner with any developer that would want to undertake city center. Those tools are necessary for us to successfully partner with any private sector firm.
Great, great point, Mark. Thanks.
I have a question again. If we, if when we're talking just about the TIF and not the incurring debt, what kind of numbers are we talking about? Just ballpark. And I realize we have to define it. We have to define the base here and all of that, but it's difficult to know how to do that strategically without having any concept of what kind of numbers we're talking about.
So I will, I'll give you a couple of reference points on this because it's very much deal specific. So so the work that that the consulting team did when they were looking at whether or not you should start a DDA, they kind of went through and said, all right, here's all the parcels in the DDA that are ripe for development. And and we're going to pick a fast, medium, and slow kind of activity. So how much will get developed over time if all those parcels happen under a bunch of different scenarios? The most aggressive scenario looks like over thirty years, it would be like two hundred and eighty million dollars of nominal value over a thirty year period. But the but the issue with that is, Erica, that 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 assumed that the city and the DDA would be taking steps to help catalyze that development to occur. Right? It's not just letting the market function. It's doing the things that would help accelerate that change and that revenue stream over time. If you go to the slow end of the spectrum, that number is substantially smaller. And so if if we're talking about subareas and we're if we're talking about development that's in the pipeline now, that 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 work was almost two years old now, right? And projects have sped up and slowed down over what their kind of forecasts look like. And so what we've talked with Hillary and Dan about is going to need to do the work in the medical district area to start to quantify what's the price point and the assessment rate and the existing land uses? And what's the base in the medical district area under the way the statute works to be able to give you that information? And that just takes time to put those numbers together and gather that data because it has to be refreshed. The city center area will be based on the then current master developers' development plan based over, you know, however long they think their development horizon looks. And so that has to be refreshed as Dan puts that together, that deal together. So so it's a big range, but you are talking about hundreds of millions of dollars over time if the DDA takes those catalytic steps to be able to cap, generate it and capture it.
And as a far, if the election, if we were to go to the ballot this year and it failed, we would be required, the only funding mechanism we would have would be the increment. And so we would be looking at budgeting based on this slow growth method that you've talked about, and we don't know what those numbers would look like yet, correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes. So so, all right. I I would say that you're in no worse position than you are today if the election fails from a from a financial standpoint. Now Hillary, as the political guru will say, well, that's two strikes against you on an election question. So there's those considerations to have to worry with. But I would say financially, you're in no worse shape than you are today because you can start the sales tax increment areas today, if you wanted to, across all three areas and and just live with the outcome. You could start it in the areas that you think are poised to to perform the best because you've got, you've got retailers going dark in city center right now as the current owner is trying to work with the city and a future buyer to kind of position it for redevelopment. So they're they're doing their part. And so you're you're seeing sales sort of decline as they don't release because they're trying to position it to for it to physically change over there. So I think my instinct with what I know today, I feel like South Broadway makes a lot of sense because it does have all the infrastructure and the retailers in place to take advantage of increased activity for sales tax increment. I think that all the activity that you're seeing in the medical district makes a lot of sense to pursue a property tax increment area over there. But I don't know if I'd do a sales tax because I just don't know enough about it. And so we're, we'd have to study that more to give, make informed choices.
We don't have the the exact numbers yet, Erica. But we do know that we, if we don't start collecting, say, sales tax increment on South Broadway and property tax increment on Hampden, we won't have any revenue for a couple of years. I mean, it because it it takes time to even start collecting revenue once you, once you establish the the start time.
Yeah, you've got to start the clock to have any hope of collecting revenue, right?
It starts, I think the analogy is that starts the the savings account, the piggy bank, to really start generating the revenue that we could spend in the future, but it's just going to take a lot longer to build that piggy bank up where the debt authorization allows us to really go big earlier.
Can someone just remind me when, is this, are all these decisions being made at our next meeting or when? What is our timeline on this?
We want to talk through it today and get consensus about it. And then we have a public hearing at our next meeting, and that's when we actually vote. And that is when it's binding. And is that correct, Hillary?
So because I didn't have a board when I started out planning for the year, I had to work in the possibility of running a Tabor election this fall as an option. So the operate, the proposed operating plan and budget includes includes that. And you will be voting on the plan and budget at the public hearing on May twenty sixth.
I think, though, it's may be helpful to clarify that the if the budget accounts includes a possible Tabor election, that's still not the same thing as calling one. So that's a decision that can be made down the road. The really the most immediate thing I think you'll be asked to do that does pertain to this presentation is deciding about the downtown plan and which subareas and which clocks to trigger and when. That's probably going to be your first decision point. And that the plan of development is not on the agenda for May twenty sixth, as far as I know.
Mr. Nixon, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm, so I I mean, thanks for that summary, Hillary. That that did help me. So step one would be to activate the TIFs, maybe in your suggested areas, as you've said. And then step two would be to work on death debt authorization to be able to take on grander plans in a shorter period of time so that we can really start to show value in what we've all, what we all believe in doing here with the Downtown Development Authority. I'm assuming that's what we're talking about, kind of in general terms. There's lots of nuances to that, undoubtedly. I have a question, what the minimum budget is going to be in fiscal year twenty two that we should ought not lose sight of that we do need to, at a minimum, fund the continuation of the DDA? So whatever comes in from that step one, because we can start that right now, needs to at least fund us through, continue to fund the operation of the DDA at a minimum.
Yeah, I I would recommend staying at the two hundred thousand dollar level as a as a baseline operating. It gets you part-time contract staff, legal, legal services, a little bit of accounting support, and the ability to do some small projects, you know, give out some grants or provide matching funds for another project opportunity. It, you know, it allows us to do some small things. Will they be as impactful as, you know, being able to invest in larger multi-year improvements, et cetera? No. You know?
So is that the end of your sort of presentation? Should we move into discussing the specifics of the budget now? I don't want to cut it short if we're
Yeah, that that's that's the end. The point is, if if you choose to pursue a Tabor election, we pretty much need to start in late May, you know, and and start doing outreach, hire an election administrator, make a recommendation to city council, you know, ask them to pass an ordinance and and do all sorts of outreach as a as a group.
So why do we, why did it fail the first time around?
I, you know, voting is private, so it's not like we know how everybody voted and have the ability to go back and ask them. Based on the comments that we've received, some people worried that it was a tax increase. You know, it was mixed in there with the the mill levy measure, and it just felt like big numbers and I'm in crisis and my business is in crisis and I can't approve anything that increases my my tax load right now, you know? There was some concern. I I did speak with some residents who live in the in the city center area who are on limited incomes, and they were, they were concerned about displacement, that that it would unduly increase their rents. I think that the third one was just sort of general confusion with the complex ballot issue during a very complex campaign season.
Yeah, I would just throw in, I think that's entirely correct. It was just a huge lift, those four complex questions on the ballot. And in conjunction with the eighty million dollar debt number, there was the total all in, you know, interest, other expenses, number of two hundred and fourteen million. So, you know, from our historical perspective in Inglewood, that was just a massive number. And it was easy for people to vote no on that. However, And it was easy for people to vote no on that. However, I mean, the reality is it was a, uh, you know, a loss by five net votes. So even in the context of all this huge challenge, it, it really lost by five net votes, nine total votes. So, you know, with, as Hillary said, Mark said, with better education to just focus on the one question this year, uh, you know, um, there's just a feeling we are, we ought to be able to win. I mean.
I, I think also, and I'll take some, some responsibility for this. I'm not sure we clearly communicated all that Tiff could do for downtown Inglewood. And there might have been an impression that it was just all about development and growth. Um, and, and not the, the quality of life improvements, um, the idea of improving uh, downtown Inglewood for everybody.
What would the impacts be of waiting a year to do the election? To give us time to say, you know, just to establish some trust in the community and a track record and say, here's what we did with a little bit. Now here's what we could do with a lot. What would, tell us what the downsides from your perspective might be of waiting?
Well, it, we could, we could operate. Uh, I don't know what our budget would be with the increment that we could capture, you know, today. If it would be even the 200,000 that we view as the minimum. We will have some one-time grants this year that might get us through this year. What we can't do without the ability to incur debt is anything that is multi-year. We can't make multi-year commitments. We, we can't, you know, all we can do is spend the money we have that year. Whatever, whatever it is. It does have, I think, some uh, dynamics around city center and the developer that's on that's lined up to be sort of a partner to the city right now. Um, Dan, you can probably address that better than I can.
Yeah, our recent extension of the pre-development agreement with SKB actually names the DVA debt authorization as a contingency of their commitment to continue. And we, we discussed that with city council. I think more important than that, Mark really pointed it out is that having a public finance tool squared away and approved by the DDA gives us much more flexibility, not only in terms of how we deal with SKB, but if for some reason we need to draw in another developer or developers, having the public finance tool in place just sends uh, such a, a more positive message to the marketplace. And uh, because it would be in essence already approved, we'd be just so much more attractive to developers that we would want to uh, try to deal with in the event that SKB did not continue. So it just, it just uh, ensures that we get going sooner.
Yeah, Dan, I'm, I'm going to also add just another layer of complexity to that. And that is that while we have a master developer who's interested in buying and redeveloping the site, we also have the existing retail owners who, because they were having their own little issues, it sort of created this really unique moment to, to assemble the city-owned land with the former Weingarten Big Box site and, and make it a much bigger parcel. The owners of the retail site have said, look, if you guys can't get your act together to figure out how to take us out and make it part of the bigger thing, we're just going to go re-lease and that'll just make it harder to do it later. And so that, that adds another level of complexity. So when Dan talks about needing to go back to the market and resolicet, there was kind of this window of opportunity where the retail guys were looking to uh, exit. And the city was looking to do this redevelopment. And so it created a bigger, more attractive thing that you could think about redeveloping and turning into a mixed use. I think there may be limitations that come from the current guy just re-positioning his asset and saying, I'm going to sell it to other retail guys who just want to own the cash flow from these big box, single-use uh, properties.
Yeah, great point. We just, with COVID, COVID actually created just a unique window of opportunity that drove the bondholders on the former Weingarten property back into discussions with the city and created an opportunity for us to kind of partner them with SKB. So under that arrangement, SKB would be a buyer of four of those key parcels that really would unlock a lot of the development potential at city center. And as Mark pointed out, if, if that timeframe passes, they'll probably be back to just trying to sell those assets as is in the market, which is not good from a redevelopment perspective.
One other consideration, um, the, so November 2021 is authorized election year. The next opportunity would be November of 2022, which is the state general election. It's kind of a toss-up whether that helps or hurts, but it tends to be a bigger, busier ballot in the state general election years. So you might face other questions that distract voters or, you know, take their, their appetite for a, a debt question away.
If the election is done this year, I mean, with COVID improving, is there a thought that there'd be more like in-person events, open houses, more just hitting the street? And trying to communicate and really sell this opportunity?
Yeah, it, it would, it would allow us to do a lot more in-person. We could do open houses in each sub-area. We can do small group briefings. We could do, you know, individual meetings. You know, much of last year, I had to do all the outreach on this screen because people were in lockdown. And it, it matters. It really matters to have that, that personal connection. And um, all of you have connections in the downtown area and um, that will be, you know, that will be more impactful than Hillary on a screen talking about Tiff. You know, I think we can make it more real uh, than what we were able to do last year.
If I can just comment and say that um, my assessment of what's going on currently in the city center area is pretty dismal. And I do believe that some more immediate action needs to be taken to be able to get things started and pushed in the right direction. Uh, I could very easily see it getting worse if nothing is done. And um, it's already what I would say is bad in that particular area. And I think with a little bit of work on our part and being able to advocate for this, being able to, I know that there's some times when we can talk about it and when we can't talk about it. But being smart about this so that we can educate the population or the elect, the electorate in being able to cast a, a more intelligent ballot versus an emotional ballot. When they say, I just don't want to take on any more debt. If they have facts, I believe that people who are in the area are going to see it as we do and the, and the, the city planners see it. I think that they're all smart and they would, they would abide by what we're recommending.
Hillary Graham, do you have any guidance for how and what we are allowed to say as board members if there were an issue on the ballot? Can we be out there saying, let's do this, we endorse this, we want to do this? Or do we have to sit back and not? I know that there's some restrictions.
Yeah, there, once the ballot question set, there's Fair Campaign Practices Act limitations. However, I would want to look at that. I mean, they, they definitely apply to city council members. And I'd want to look at their application to you guys as a DDA board. So I, I, I would defer that to, to when I'm more informed about this specific issue. But yeah, you're right. I mean, there is generally a prohibition against spending public funds to to encourage voters to vote one way or the other on a ballot issue. With some exceptions, the DDA could pass a resolution of support and so could city council. You can provide factual summaries, but um, other than that, you might be limited.
We won't be able to get cute little graphics of like the piggy bank, like Blake said, because that really, you know, makes people understand quicker.
Yeah, I don't, I would, I would want to look at it more closely before we decide what you could spend money on.
Yeah, yeah, the basically, once the ordinance is passed and, and the Tabor election period begins, you can't advocate, you, you can't run a vote yes on, you know, debt authorization campaign. You can provide factual information. You can answer questions. You can talk to people. Um, but we can't do yard signs, you know, we can't do, you know, the kind of, the kind of postcards you get in the mail during campaign, you know, season. It has to be uh, very factual information for, for the voters to consider.
Could someone form, I don't know if this is the right type of organization, but a C6 or something like that, that would be allowed to spend money on advocating for this?
Private, private businesses can, if there's an Inglewood chamber or something like that. I mean, they can certainly spend their funds.
And would there be a prohibition on any of us donating to something like that as board members?
Probably not, no. I mean, you still maintain your rights to uh, advocate as a private citizen. So it really comes down to the DDA acting in its official capacity and what you're limited to do there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a great, great question. And there has been in the past, a lot of conversation about a private committee being formed to really advocate and help educate.
Do you have any sense, have you heard Dan or Hillary about how people in the community feel about this? Would there be, I mean, do you, do you sense there would be a greater level of support this year than there was last year?
I, in all honesty, I think we're kind of at a, you know, neutral. We're kind of where we ended up last year. But when you add now the establishment of the DDA, the board, the people who are on the board, some of the other development activity that's in the works. I, you know, I think we have a stronger story to tell and certainly more focus on the pure education aspects of this one single issue this year.
How are other board members? How are you? What do you think about this? How do you feel? With moving forward with a ballot measure this year?
Well, Erica, I do believe that we need to activate the TIFs, maybe as suggested. I do think that we should go forward with a debt authorization. It's five votes, as Dan said, that we missed it by last time. If, if we can't pick up five votes by putting together a reasonable argument why it's in the best interest of the people in the um, DDA, I think that uh, we're probably not doing our job well. And I, I, even if it take, even if we have to take two swings at it, um, a swing at it this fall and another swing at it next fall, it's probably worthwhile. But I do believe that, uh, you know, if we do a good job of pitching what it is that we want to do, it will happen for us in a positive way.
I don't see any reason to not try. I, I mean, I keep trying to figure out what, what would be the reason to not try and I, I just can't see the reason.
What do you think, Blake?
And I agree. I mean, I, I think we're all kind of in a new role, so it, it can maybe feel a little bit overwhelming to kind of rush right into it, but like Hillary said, as far as there's definitely some opportunities in off-year elections because there's just less distractions and we all know the whole political climate right now, there's a lot of distractions, but being in that off-year, I think if the messaging is done right and when you really get the opportunity to get on the street and connect with people and it's not in electronic format with the PowerPoint presentations. I know in projects that I've been involved with where you can really meet people in person and have all, all the boards of why this is great. And they can see that the images of Castle Rock and, and Longmont and Fort Collins about what could be created. They start to have more of a sense of place and the reality of it, of what it could be. And that's very difficult in electronic format. And so that, that maybe this year it could be done as things are improving. So I guess I, I agree. I think, I think if not now, you know, why not?
How about you, Diane?
Yeah, I absolutely agree with what's been said. I, I think we are at the cusp of excitement in this city for the first time in a long time. And you know, the vote was really close and we have the opportunity, I think, to get some facts out there to help people be less afraid than they were. And with the pandemic, hopefully slowly evening itself out and people getting out and about, they're going to want a city that they can participate in and be excited about. And I, I really think that that's our role to help people engage in that. So I, I, it's scary. It's a little unnerving, but I agree. I, why not now? I say we go for it.
Okay. Are there any other um, thoughts or ideas? It sounds like we have consensus to move forward with that piece of the budget. Are there other items of discussion on the budget that people wanted to bring up?
Erica, this is Old Daniel. Do you mind if I just jump in? Just because I did miss about five minutes of that conversation. Yeah, I'm sorry about that, but I guess, uh, and this may have already been brought up, but uh, I'm guessing that city council will have to authorize through an ordinance to put this on the ballot. Is that, is this correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I, I guess from my point of view, obviously I would like to move forward with this, but I do believe that there, you know, obviously the first step would be to convince council to allow this to go onto a ballot, which I think there may be some trepidation. But I obviously see the benefits of it. I would do my best to, to convince council to put it back in the hands of the voters, but I, I, that would just be one concern that I happen to have about this.
Um, Councilmember Sierra, do you think if we offered a similar work session with city council, that might help them form their um, decision?
Of, of course. I think more, the more information, the better. Just to inform them about the risks and the rewards for getting this onto the ballot.
You know.
I'll, I'll, I'll just say that, you know, last year, the experience was ultimately council had a lot of deliberation, but I think ultimately felt a certain comfort level with putting it in the hands of the specific qualified electors within the DDA. So my, my hunch would be, you know, once we overcome of a certain threshold again this year, that I would, I would think there would be a high probability that that's where we ended up again. Let's, let's put the measure on the ballot and let the voters decide.
Does the city incur any additional expense for putting an additional question on the ballot? Since it's timed with the general, with a normal election, they probably don't, right?
The, well, I mean, there might be um, kind of a incremental increase in the size of the ballot. Um, but I think the, the intent would be that the DDA could pay for that additional cost.
Just talking about the grants, um, I think they were described to me once as, you know, once in a generational grant that are coming with all the federal funding lately. Do we have to initiate that? Is that already being done? Do we have to say, let's do it? How, what do we do with those?
Well, we do. Um, and that's on the agenda today too. There are potentially three pots of money that the DDA could pursue grant funding from. The first one is through the um, American Recovery Act. And that's the bill that Congress has already passed. It includes provisions for small business support. The state of Colorado will be dispersing that to cities and counties. And at that point, the DDA might be able to request some funds. There already is one fund that has been released by CDOT and it's their Main Street Revitalization Fund. We are eligible to compete for $125,000 grant funding to undertake a project that enhances accessibility, multimodal connections, connections to local businesses on a main street. And um, we're zoning in on a, a collaborative approach with the Inglewood Public Works Department. They can request up to $2 million out of the same pot of money. And the project we'd like to propose, and I would like your approval to pursue this today, if I could get it, is several, there's, there's several, several we could clump together. We could enhance the several, there's, there's several, several we could clump together. We could enhance the crosswalk and passeos on South Broadway. We could design and build the mid-block crossing at the Gothic Theater. And we could put string lights over Broadway in between. The city has already allocated $100,000 to Public Works to enhance site, enhance crosswalks and $30,000 to help with the planning for the Lights Over Broadway project. So that's a match, right? And if, if we go after our pot, Public Works goes after their pot, we could probably put together a set of improvements for South Broadway, you know, this year and maybe finish it next year. That's an opportunity. The third, the third pot coming down the pipeline is transportation money. So the, the federal infrastructure bill, what does that look like? How are the states going to, going to distribute that? State of Colorado is also doing a transportation bill right now. You know, is there any money that the DDA could be eligible to compete for there? I, I don't know currently. It's, it's a great opportunity. We hustle to organize the DDA this year and get ourselves in the legal position to compete for them. But it's, it's year one, year two. And we still have, you know, 28 years after that to program and invest in the downtown area.
So do we need to take a vote to give you approval to do that?
I would like that.
So we need a motion and a second, right?
What, what would we be voting on? Because we might not have proper agenda notice.
Oh, sorry. I think we kind of skipped to C without finishing B. Maybe we should come back.
Well, Hillary, can, can't the board just provide a general authorization of direction based on consent?
I'm just not clear what, I'm not clear what the question is that's being voted on or, or consented to.
Hillary, Hillary was saying that we needed, oh, go ahead.
I would like direction from the board to, to draft a grant proposal under the CDOT Main Street Revitalization Program.
Understood. Yeah. I mean, I don't think that needs to be official action. It could just be head nods and yeah, go for it.
Anybody opposed to doing that?
I have one question. Does that also include the American Recovery Act, Hillary?
No, the grant proposal that I can, I can apply for right now is coming through CDOT and they have this Main Street Revitalization Program. The American Recovery Act funding is, is a whole different stream of funds coming to the state of Colorado.
And I'll just say, just to give you some comfort level, Hillary's done a great job connecting with the various city departments, working with Public Works, you know, scoping this project, the idea of improving the two, you know, kind of under-improved passeos off of Broadway and the connecting crosswalks and then adding another set of crosswalks. I, I think it's just a great project and it's a, it's a way of showing the immediate value of the DDA in the downtown area.
How the American, I'm sorry, Rescue Act. Recovery Act was last year. Rescue Act is this year. How that could play out, you know, and I, again, cross your fingers, but if the DDA could apply for some funds through the State Department of Local Affairs, I believe is where it would come from, we could maybe apply for funding for facade grants. Get a chunk of money. We would have an application project, process and we could award grants to small businesses anywhere in the downtown district that wanted to enhance their signage, their paint, their lighting, their, you know, et cetera. In addition, the city will have some continued economic recovery funding in the way of grants to upgrade your HVAC or grants to enhance your patio or, you know, the kinds of things they've been offering. So a city could, or a business owner could go after two things. You know, this is how we leverage efforts. So, you know, when I talk to Darren Hollingsworth in Economic Development, I say, what are you, you know, what are you offering and how can the DDA supplement that? How do we leverage efforts? Well, if we both have a chance at this federal recovery money and, and the Economic Development Department is going to continue offering grants for business operations, maybe the DDA goes for physical improvements. We go for facade grants or rehabilitation of a building. And again, but it's economic recovery, right? That's how we get our, our local, our local small businesses out of this stuff.
Well, if you're looking for a motion, I move that we release Hillary to do the CDOT Main Street Revitalization paperwork and get us in, in the fight so that we can have some chance of getting those funds.
I'm sorry to be a bugger here, but we don't have any action on the agenda and we can't do anything like that. I mean, if we need to have authorization to apply for grants, that needs to be on it as an action item on an agenda. If you just want to generally direct Hillary to go out and get grant money, then I think that's fine and we can leave it at that today.
Well, and I, let me amend. My recommendation is that we would love, Hillary, if you could actually do some work to get us some funds at some point in the future.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the budget or the operations plan that we need to have prior to our public hearing next? The 28th? Does anyone else have anything they wanted to bring up? Okay, so I think we can adjourn now. Do we need a motion to adjourn? Okay. All right. Thanks, everybody. This meeting is adjourned.
Two weeks. That's when we're back.
Two weeks.
Okay.
Feel free to call me if you, if anything bubbles up in the meantime, or you have any questions. I'm happy to chat with you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you, everyone.
Good to see you all. Thanks. Bye-bye.